Yep, yep.
All right, we are live and we have folks coming in right now. I see our health director. Who I'm going to promote to a panelist. And hello everyone, just give us a few moments. We just opened the virtual door and we're waiting for folks to come on in. So give us just a few seconds. People are still coming in Commissioner.
Okay.
A big crowd today. All right, it's started to slow down, so I bet we can get going.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Thank you for hosting our monthly community conversations. I know you're, we're keeping you busy these days now that the three of us are doing these. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our monthly Red Feather Lakes, Crystal Lakes, Glacier View Meadows, Community Conversation. John Kafalas, I'm joined by Jody Shadak McNally, who is one of our newer commissioners from District Three. And in a moment, I'll give her a chance to introduce herself and say a couple of words. We also have Tom Gonzalez, our Public Health Director. And he'll give, I asked him to give us an update on COVID-19, especially with the vaccination stuff. But also through the lens of an issue that was raised at the last meeting, I think by Karen Hughes. About what, you know, what the mountain community could expect regarding crafts fairs. I know it was a little bit challenging last year and they have, they have crafts fairs that are really important to the community. They want to schedule around Memorial Day and another one is perhaps July 4th. So I'm hoping you can provide any insights there, Tom. We also have, I've asked Reagan Cloudman from the US Forest Service to give us an update on the, on the recreational sports shooting. Issue and, and there are six, at least six questions that were posed by one of the residents, you know, a month ago. And Reagan is prepared to answer those questions. So that's kind of how it'll go. Let me turn it over to Michelle, who can give us all of her wisdom regarding Zoom if we still need it.
Thank you. I do see some new names today, so I will just very quickly go over how you guys can engage in the conversation today. It's called Community Conversation for a reason. We hope you guys are here to engage with us. You can ask questions or leave comments a couple of different ways. The first way is to use the Q and A box. You'll notice at the bottom of your screen where you typically see a chat box. You have the option for Q and A box. So if you have questions or you have comments that you want to propose to us today. Please feel free to put those in that box at any point. Also, we do encourage, you know, normal conversation, voice to voice or face to face. However you like to call it in this environment, but you can raise your hand. So if you go ahead and click the raise your hand button, it lets us know that you want to talk to us. And then I'll walk you through the steps to get you unmuted and you can act like we were sitting across the table. So we are happy you're all here and we hope you can engage with us today. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank, thank you very much, Michelle. So friends, the first thing I'd like to do is I want to respond to a question that was posed by Janice. Weickselman regarding road work being done on 74E. So I'd like to, I did get some information regarding that. She was asking what's, you know, what is an update on road work on 74E? Red Feather Lakes Road, what, why, and for how long? And according to our Roden Bridge Director Todd Jurgens, this is what I learned. Currently Roden Bridges, Roden Bridge does not have any work underway on County Road 74E. They did just finish a culvert lining project at, at a culvert that I think is located near 74E and 67J. And they had to address the inside of it that was all rusty. This is additional information of how we did this in a way to try to disrupt, you know, issues with traffic and, and, and people having proper thoroughfare. This culvert conveys, conveys local drainage under County Road 74E. And outlets into Parven Lake, replacing the culvert would have required us to excavate across CR 74E. Heavily impacted traffic and required a large and expensive asphalt patch. Instead, Roden Bridges lined the pipe with the proper liner that was inserted inside the existing 36-inch culvert. This process required no excavation. The work was accomplished for, from an easement that we acquired outside the right of way. And eliminated the need for any asphalt patch. Additionally, we were able to perform Roden Bridge, the work during the winter months when traffic volumes are less since no road work was required. That Todd Jurgens goes on to say, in the next few weeks, we will begin a shouldering project on County Road 74E. We will be grading the shoulders and adding material as necessary to eliminate any drop off at the edge of the pavement. This schedule will depend on weather as the shoulder area needs to be clear of snow and ice for us to perform the work. This will take approximately two weeks to complete if the weather cooperates. Finally, regarding engineering, county engineering, they have a project has, that is upgrading the minor structure at 74E and 68C. Which is just east of the parking lot of the Lone Pine Unit. The contractor will be boring a new pipe under County Road 74E and lining an existing box culvert with a steel liner. The project started on February 8th, 2021 and is scheduled to be complete in mid-May. The project should have very minor impacts to traffic since it requires no excavation across the road. And this might be what Janice is referring to. There is, looks like county engineering has some activity going on. But otherwise Roden Bridge does not, and they are planning to do some shoulder work, you know, when the weather cooperates. So I hope that's helpful to folks living up at Red Feather Lakes and Crystal Lakes. The next thing I'd like to mention really quickly before I turn it over to Commissioner Shadak McNally is that. Our next meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 25th. And I have invited Lori Hodges, our Director of Emergency Management, as well as Justin White Cellar, someone from the Larimer County Sheriff's Office. Emergency Operations Team. And Lori, if she's available, she will be speaking at our Fort Collins LaPorte meeting on, on March 13th. But if she's available for the March 25th Red Feather Lakes, she'll give us an update on the Cameron Peak Fire Recovery Activities. And also with regard to the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Operations, I've asked them to give us. Their, you know, their sense, their predictions regarding the 2021 wildfire season and what they're, you know, what they're expecting. So with that said, I hope that's helpful. I'd like to ask Jody, Commissioner Shadak McNally, if, if you'd like to introduce yourself and say a few words. And then we'll turn it over to our Public Health Director, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner Kafalas. I appreciate the opportunity to join you today. I'm very interested. In the questions and concerns of the Red Feather Lakes area. And my name is Jody Shadak McNally. I am the Commissioner for District Three, but as you know, the whole county votes for all the commissioners. So I consider myself the Commissioner of all Larimer County, as I think Commissioner Kafalas does as well. And the first woman to ever serve in the District Three seat, and I'm really proud of that. And I'm always interested and available to listen to any concerns and questions you have. And I'm here mostly today just to learn and listen. And I think Commissioner Kafalas for letting me join him today. Thank you. You're on mute, Commissioner.
I'm just noticing in the Q and A, Karen Hughes put in a, an observation that a stop sign was, looks like it was knocked down. 67J and 74E and we'll certainly follow up right away as soon as we're able to with the Roden Bridge folks that are made aware of that. Thank you, Karen. Tom, thanks a lot for taking time. Please introduce yourself and let us know what's happening with COVID and vaccinations and craft fairs in the summertime.
Absolutely. Good afternoon Commissioners and Michelle and. Community up in the Red Feathers area. Appreciate the opportunity to give an update and answer any questions. I appreciate the opportunity again. Does everybody see my screen? Awesome. What I was gonna do is a couple of updates, talk a little bit about where we're at with COVID. Numbers, metrics, and then the vaccine, which is so exciting. It's the light at the end of the tunnel. Unfortunately, we're not out of the tunnel yet, but we do have some very good news. So. Let's talk a little bit about vaccine. You've heard eligibility phases. You may have heard distributions. We'll talk a little bit about that. This is just an illustration that our Office of Communications and Technology put together. Kind of frame what, what we're seeing with the vaccine, which we're hearing will change and some good news there.
It's Tom, I need to interrupt you, but you seem to be going in and out.
Am I doing that again? Shoot.
Yes.
Let me.
And I didn't know if it was just me that heard it. Now I can't hear. Well, maybe that sounds a little bit better.
Let me know. Is that better?
I think that sounds better. You keep going and if not, I'll let you know.
Please do. I'll make sure. Okay, I'll be loud and make sure I don't move around and go in and out. So we're in phases 1A, 1B1 and 1B2. We'll talk more about who's all eligible in those phases. Now, these phases were established by the Governor's Office and Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We don't direct or decide on those phases, but we certainly work with the State Health Department to make sure we're getting what we call shots in the arm. And get that vaccine out as quickly as possible. What you see here is we've got currently 98,000 people that are eligible in these phases in Larimer County. We're getting about 10,000 doses a week. So it, it's, it's not right now an issue of staffing or enough providers like UC Health, Banner, Salute, Sunrise, or pharmacies. That are all part of the community's effort in getting vaccine into the shots in the arm. The challenge is we don't have enough vaccine. Well, we're hearing some good news, but that's changing. We'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. But it's just a little illustration right now where we're at. Yeah, you may be eligible in these categories. And you're saying, I have, how do I get, how do I sign up? I haven't heard anything. We're gonna talk a little bit about that. We want to make sure you're in the queue and you're signed up. So when vaccine comes more available, you're right there to get that vaccine. It's so important that we get this vaccine in the, in, in people so we can get out of this pandemic. So who is available or eligible in 1A, 1B1 and 1B2? For 1A started back in December. That's our high-risk healthcare workers and individuals. Those are the individuals in our ICUs, our hospitals, our long-term care centers. We've pretty much got everybody, the two-shot vaccine, which is with Pfizer and Moderna, they're the two companies that are approved. That's, that's been so successful. We'll talk a little bit about the numbers there. 1B1 opened up in January and that was our Colorado ones age 70 and up. And our moderate-risk healthcare workers and first responders. Moderate-risk healthcare workers are, are dentists, our mental health providers, where there's a close contact. With a person that may be asymptomatic with COVID-19. So they're very important to get vaccinated as quickly as possible. The Governor set a very good goal, a wildly important goal, to get 70% of our 70 and up vaccinated by the end of February. And we'll give you some numbers on that. We're right on, on course to meet that goal. Why is that so important? Out of our 224 deaths here, terrible loss of life in Larimer County due to this deadly virus. Over 75%, nearly 80% of the deaths are people 70 and up. So we want to get them vaccinated as quickly as possible. Also, long-term care, over 50% of our deaths came from long-term care facilities. And just tragic, tragic events in those facilities. And so we want to get that, we want to save lives and we want to get that pandemic part of it over. So been very, very successful here. And then two and a half, three weeks ago, Governor opened up Phase 1B3 or 2, I'm sorry. And that included 65 and 69-year-olds. And then our pre-K through 12 educators and our childcare workers and licensed childcare programs. So important to get our teachers, our educators, our childcare providers educated. So we can get our students in-person learning at schools. We want to get that going. So we've been working really hard with all our providers to get shots in the arm. Hearing almost 90% of Pooter School District has, we got their first dose or they're signed up to get it this week. So that, we wanted to get that done by the end of this week to be ready for that second dose right around spring break or after spring break. So lots of good work going on in that category. Now, the next category, 1B3, that we're hearing probably open up around March 8th, that timeframe. So in a week or so, is going to be our frontline essential workers and people ages 16 to 64. With two or more high-risk conditions. And we define all those conditions. This call can be fine down on the website. We can certainly get this to the group. Work with Michelle, but what does that mean? And then what is a front line essential worker, people working in our restaurants, our grocery stores. Those areas where there's close contact and have had high risks throughout this pandemic. It's time to get them vaccinated, give them the opportunity to get vaccinated. So we're ramping up, putting plans together to get this next group vaccinated. And we know we won't be done with everybody here, just with the limited vaccine. But it, it's a phased approach. We're going to keep adding people as we get more vaccines. So just update on the vaccine distribution, then hopefully spring, we're going to open it up for people 60, 64. With a high-risk conditions and a continuity of operations for state government and local government. Oops, and then summary, can't see here, general public. So we've got a lot of work ahead, but we're working very collaboratively here in Larimer County with all our providers. And we're working closely with Weld County Public Health and their providers to make sure, because we, we share health systems. That we are getting this vaccine out in equitable, just manner of process. And we're meeting on that and we want to hear from the community on what the barriers are, whether that's access, transportation, vaccine hesitancy. Hey, I'm concerned about this vaccine. We want to have those conversations and we want to be transparent. So we want to hear from the community. We want to hear from you on what could be those barriers. What is the hesitancy to not get that vaccine? So we can get the vaccine to people as soon as possible. So what, how are we doing? This is data that came in yesterday. Just over 82,000 shots in the arm. Great work with everyone since December, getting, we got our first allotment of vaccine. So we've got just under 56,000 or under 16% of our, our total Larimer County population with one dose. Just under eight, two doses and that wildly important goal of 70 and up. We're almost there. We're, we're at 67.6% one shot, but we need the two shots. So we're at about just under 36%. Today's a big day, UC Health Banner. We've got clinics running and all the way to Saturday. So we think we're going to be over that 70 and we're going to be pushing 50% by come Sunday for two shots. We do have a little bit of disparity here that we're working on with our, 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 not our, our community partners. Regarding Latinx residents, quite a bit less percentage being vaccinated. Now, in this eligibility category, we do see it's a smaller group, but when we go to 1B3, that's gonna be a larger group. And we want to make sure that we have equitable distribution of the vaccine. And what are we missing? What are those barriers? So that's an important data point that we are looking at here and take very seriously in Larimer County. So what, what's one of those efforts? The State Health Department's keeping about 10 to 15% of all the vaccine that comes into the state. It's about 100,000 doses per week right now. Setting it aside for equity, what they call points of distribution of pop-up pods. Last week, we submitted a, a strategy on targeting our essential workers who may be facing access or hesitancy issues among the Latinx community. So we've submitted that in. We should hear by the, by tomorrow or Monday if we're approved. And we will start working with our community partners to get this pop-up pod as soon as 1B3 becomes eligible first week of March. So this is just one example. We're going to be submitting others. Another pod could be rule Larimer County such as Red Feathers. Why not have a pop-up clinic there at the library? Why not have it in areas so its access isn't a barrier? So we're working on that. We certainly want to bring the vaccine to your community. We want to hear what the barriers are or what challenges are. So that's something we've got staff working on right now and we want to make sure we're getting that out. And that will be something coming your way here real soon as, as eligibility continues to increase for vaccine distribution. Switching gears real briefly, just talking a little bit about metrics. We're talking a little bit, we, we test the wastewater or we, the Colorado State University does. And we have seen an uptick in the virus in the wastewater. What does that mean? Our Red Feather, we all know you're on onsite wastewater treatment system, so we're not testing your water. You don't have a community water system, a big one as part of this project. But what we are seeing in Fort Collins, Wellington and Loveland is an increase in the viral load in the sewer sheds, in the wastewater where we tested. Wonderful technology and a partnership with Colorado State University and all of our sewer districts. So we're just making sure we're getting the information out, folks who are not out of this. Seeing a little uptick, face coverings, hand washing, social distancing when you come down to Fort Collins, Wellington, Loveland, enjoy all the amenities. Make sure we're following those good safety protocols. We don't want another uptick in the virus. We don't want to, you know, have to go back to orange or something like that. So this sewer testing is an early warning indicator that potentially we could have more cases in five to 10 days. So we're just informing the community to just make sure we're taking all those protective measures. Whenever we're in areas where there's more people. So that's just a little bit of that. Our seven-day case rate, that's always something we're tracking. Where are you at with this? Remember back? Unfortunately, we had to go to red back in December. Things were very difficult. Lots of loss of life. We, we worked so well as a community dropping those cases. Thank you to all your work. Face coverings, hand washing, social distancing, only sticking with your family. It's so hard, so challenging. But look at all that. We dropped it down, had a little bit of uptick after the holidays. We've plateaued here. I'd love to see this go down into the blue. So we're going to work hard to get that down to the blue while we're vaccinating our community. So right now we've kind of trended right here on a plateau. Hospitalizations, you know, we had that first wave back last year, small one in the summer. We worked again hard, brought them back down. And then we popped back up here on the third wave. We worked so hard to get them back down to where we're seeing less than 20 people in our hospitals being treated for COVID-19. Saving lives. Our hospitals are doing such great work. Back in November, it was, in December was very, very challenging. Thank you for all your efforts to, to those preventive measures to get our hospitals beds open. So then we're not, at this time, we're worried about people with a heart attack or maybe a trauma from a car accident. Can they get treatment? Or hospitals are available to do that now because of the great work everyone's doing. This just shows how the vaccine is working. We've been really working hard on 65 and up. On getting those individual vaccines because there's such high risk for hospitalization. For being put on a ventilator and ultimately loss of life. So, you know, back when things weren't doing so well, back in November, December, January, 20% of our overall cumulative cases were 65 and up. That led to more hospitalizations, more loss of life. Where now with the vaccine and all the work we're doing, it's six, less than 6% right now. So that's telling us a couple of things that the vaccines work and our preventive measures are working. Right now, the largest group is that 18 to 24-year-old group. We're working very closely with Colorado State University, Front Range Community College. Our students have done, made tons of sacrifices. They really have. And we're making sure they understand where we're at with this portion right here. But as we continue to get more and more vaccinated, we want to squish that to where we have less and less cases. So that's the, the ultimate goal. Another successful story we like to share is the federal work on Walgreens and CDS getting shots in the arm in our long-term care facilities. Again, over 50% of our deaths came from long-term care. Well, since we've gotten two doses in our residents and our healthcare workers, we've had a massive decline in cases. 90% reduction in cases. And then this last week, we did have eight cases because they randomly tested them, just to make sure we don't have it going on within those facilities. Out of those eight, six of them were showing no symptoms. They were vaccinated, so the vaccine works. The other two, we're trying to learn more about if they were vaccinated or not. But those six individuals, no symptoms, didn't have to go to the hospital, nothing. We're looking at the data, probably three would have went, went to the hospital, one would have lost their life. So this vaccine's working and this is exciting news. We're hearing lots of great stories in our long-term care facilities. Where it was so, so challenging back in November and on, just because of the isolation for our, our long-term care folks. Just wanted to show this briefly. It's a busy slide, so let me bear with me. The yellow line is influenza. So we're going to compare influenza and COVID-19. Very two different viruses. One's a coronavirus, one's a flu. But look at the flu for 2021, this is hospitalizations flat. We've actually had three influenza hospitalizations since November in Larimer County. Now, the orange line is 2020. Or sorry, the gray line is average hospitalizations for, for influenza. You can see we were about 72 last year. Orange is 219, you know, close to almost 100. And then the blue is 118 right in between. And the dotted line is our median. Being seen, this is a typical influenza year. Our hospital systems are built for this. They, they know that this is gonna happen most years. But the combination of a higher uptick in influenza vaccine and then all the preventive measures to prevent COVID-19, we've flattened influenza. We've suppressed it to almost nothing. It's just fascinating to me to see that data. Now, this green is COVID-19 hospitalizations. Here was the big problem. Hospitals aren't built for this. So that was the challenge and that's where we really struggled, you know, November through January. So just kind of a comparison on typical years with influenza and then this year with all our preventive measures. Now, there's a couple of ways if you're eligible to get the vaccine right now and then next week when, or further on with 1B3. You can get on our website, larimer.org, right at the top, COVID-19, it says vaccines. Click on that, one click. Again, larimer.org. Go in and there's, there's a survey you can sign up. Takes, takes less than five minutes, about three minutes, sign up. Whether you're 65 up or whatever, whatever you were eligible at, you sign up, you get in the queue. You can also call our number, 498-5500, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And you'll get a must, it's a must call, a must answer. So you'll get a live person who can help you through the queue. We can sign you up, tell you, you know, get you hooked up with a provider because we're all working on the same system for the most part. Not perfect, but for the most part. We're going to expand these hours. We're hiring some more people to do it Saturday morning and some evenings. You can text us, we'll respond back, or you can email us, however your preference of communication is. So we want to make sure you all have this information now. Maybe you've already signed up and you're like, I haven't gotten a call. I got them, they got an email. I don't know when I'm gonna get my vaccine. Call this number. Call today. We want to see, maybe there was a glitch in the system. Maybe we got the numbers transposed, so we don't have the right number. We want to make sure we got you in the queue and you're set up. We're, we're opening up another clinic Saturday for 70 and up. So we want to make sure if you're eligible, you get in that clinic. So I just throw this out. Don't, don't hesitate to give us a call. We've got staff ready to answer your call. Let's see. And that's my update, Commissioner.
Thank you, Tom. I wonder if you could speak to. And Karen can pose the question, but the, the issue of where we think that the county will be regarding events like crafts fairs. Like the Red Feather Lakes, Crystal Lakes area, craft fair that I, that I believe is scheduled around Memorial Day. There's one in July 4th and then there's a Labor Day. Event, fundraising event for the Red Feather Lakes Fire Protection District. I wonder if you could speak to that, sir?
Yeah, that's a great question regarding craft fairs. We want to get back to these events. They're so important to our community. What, what we heard this week, which is really exciting, is that we are going to start seeing an increase in vaccine. Johnson and Johnson's going to be approved here soon. So that'll be a one-dose vaccine. Pfizer and Moderna are ramping up their loads. So we are going to start seeing more vaccine. Why I'm saying that is we, we should have a good portion of our community vaccinated come May. With that, I believe our cases are going to come down. So we can have these events. There will still be some preventative, we'll probably still have to wear masks. We'll still have to do some distancing, some occupancy, but we absolutely, I foresee us having those, those craft fairs, those, those summer events we enjoy. And by Labor Day, my goodness, I hope it's a whole different picture. Uh, and by Labor Day, my goodness, I hope it's a whole different picture and we're slowly getting out of this pandemic. So, uh, where we're at, I absolutely submit, you know, start putting your plans together. I got staff that can review them. And as we get closer to May, maybe we can lessen the restrictions based upon vaccination in our cases. But I am very optimistic that we are going to have these, these kinds of events. And we've learned a lot since last year. Base coverings were social distancing, so we can, we're already having some events right now, limited occupancy. And we want to be able to expand those and get more occupancy by, by May for sure.
Thank you, Tom, and it looks like Karen has her hand raised and I imagine she might have more specific questions. So let's, let's turn it over to Karen, please. Thanks.
Karen, you just need to unmute yourself now and you should be good to go.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Tom, you, you stated music to my ears because I'm the office manager of the community association and, um, pretty much plan most of the events up here, not all of them, but, but, but heavily involved in them. And so I need to know how, how detailed of plans you need me to submit and what the process is for submitting that. We have crafters who are so very anxious because for many of them, this is their livelihood that, you know, they, they may be retired and getting social security, but they make a big percentage of their other income, they're kind of spending money through, uh, these craft fairs. And they've been, I bet they, they're going to have so many crafts ready for this that it'll be surprising. But, um, so I really, I need to get word out to them so that they are ready and it can be prepared. But I also want to make sure that I can fulfill all the protocol requirements that the county is going to need. And I know last year I did submit those things and it was a bit of a different year. We just, the unknown, the fear of the unknown, obviously. But what I would like to do is maybe provide layout plans as well as, you know, the protection protocol that we would put in place, like, for example, like everybody is supposed to wear a mask and we'll have sanitation stations, we'll have, um, if we need to have contact tracing, you know, um, capturing names, phone numbers, emails and all of that. So that if, if forbid, something would, were to happen, we could at least, um, do a, an email out to everybody and, and give them that, that insight that they might want to get tested. Anyway, but I do believe that with the vaccinations coming along and it sounds, uh, to me, that looks really promising. I know it seems like it's slow, but to me, it looked really upbeat and promising. I'm waiting for UC Health to give me the trigger, so, um, and hopefully it'll be coming here soon. Cause I'm in that higher end category of this. Anyway, so, um, hopefully I, you've given me really good positive vibes here. So after this, I'll be reaching out to all of the crafters and letting them know. So people are really, really anxious. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Yes, please do reach out to them. And if I can get your contact, I'll get my staff to be in contact with you.
Oh, sure. Let me, uh, should I put it in the chat?
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
And I don't know, Tom, maybe when you follow up with Karen, you could.
Or I'll put it in the question and answer. How's that sound?
Perfect. We're, we'll get her.
And I'm hoping that you could follow up with Karen to provide more detailed answers to her, her questions that she posed about process, what, you know, what needs to go in the application.
Sure.
And, and I think most, very importantly is when, you know, what's the timing of when, you know, folks should submit this application to get permission to do some kind of a craft fair, Memorial Day, 4th of July, et cetera. Thank you. All right. I know that Steve had a couple of questions in the Q and A. Uh, and we won't forget those, but I'm, I'm wondering if there are other questions for our, uh, public health director. I see Brian has a question too, but any questions um, for Tom Gonzalez regarding COVID-19 or vaccinations or, you know, how, anything else?
I'm not seeing any hand raised, Commissioner, and I'm not seeing any questions related to COVID um, in the Q and A box. So, um, I bet we're probably good to let Tom go about his day and move on.
Great. Uh, thank you. Hang on, thank you, Michelle. Thank, Tom, of course you're welcome to stay, but, uh, I imagine you have some, uh, public health matters to attend to. Uh, I, I, I do appreciate you taking the time to be with us and, and in particular, this was, you know, your presence here was very helpful and, and we, I wanted to be responsive to, you know, Karen's concerns about craft fairs. And because that's so important to folks up here.
No, we'll get, we'll get the right people with Karen immediately. So thank you.
We do have one comment. Um, Janice says, as a physician with UC Health and in the clinic in Wellington, I'm happy to help with a vaccine clinic in Redfeather.
Fantastic. That's what we need. Yeah, it's awesome. That's great.
And Janice, maybe you could put in the Q and A or somewhere. Um, I don't know if you were on when I answered your questions around the, uh, Red Feather Lakes road work. Um, if, if you did hear my answer and if it was adequate, then, you know, maybe a thumbs up. But otherwise I'd like to ask, um, again, Tom, you're welcome to go, but you're welcome to hang out too.
Well, thanks for having me. And if there's ever any questions, give me a holler.
Take care. Uh, so Steve asked a, a couple of questions and I, I guess my response would be if you could further clarify. He's asked for the USDA contact for the USDA for Crystal Lakes Association and also fire department in Crystal Lakes, um, equipment grants. And, and I suspect the USDA one, maybe Reagan can answer that. But Steve, can you provide a little more clarity what you're asking for there?
So Steve, I, you give me, you're good.
Yeah, thank you, John. Yeah, what we're looking for, about a year ago, we had a guest came in from the USDA and talked about low interest rate or even grants for fire equipment. Um, and fire departments, I know the Pooter Valley, we had a station built with a USDA grant. And we're just wondering if, uh, if we had any insight on some contacts that we may be able to, um, reach out to. Uh, we are right now building our own brush truck, a new brush truck with our own funds and volunteer donations and everything else. But we're looking for another brush truck that we need to replace. It's a 1987 Chevy. Um, and it's kind of old and we're just looking if there's any way we can get any information uh, about USDA grants and also for a new squad vehicle, which we use for emergency rescue.
Thank you, Steve, for clarifying. I have a feeling Reagan is better able to answer some of that or at least we can follow up together with, you know, more specifics, uh, specific answers. But I, I just wanted to acknowledge that Reagan Cloudman with the US Forest Service, uh, she's joined us. I, I specifically asked her to come in and give us an update on the recreational sports shooting issue. And in particular, there were at least six questions, uh, very constructive questions that were posed by, uh, you know, folks who are concerned about this issue and she's prepared to respond to that. I also asked Reagan if she would give us an update on the, um, uh, the, the wood pile burnings that are being proposed for the winter. And also I think there's a prescribed burn, Elkhorn Creek prescribed burn. So that's what I've asked Reagan to do. Uh, Reagan, welcome. Are you able to answer Steve's questions about equipment grants and, and USDA contacts?
Um, I'm not, but I did write it down. Um, and I'm guessing that, uh, I can follow up with our fire folks and, uh, and see what we can find out and provide information to him. So I'll, I'll follow up on that one. Um, uh, as for all the other, the list of things, um, I can start, uh, I'll start with the pile burning. We have been doing pile burning in the Redfeather area over the last couple of weeks. I think we've done over 500 piles. Um, so that's great. Taking advantage of the snow wherever we can. Uh, we may, if conditions allow, continue burning over the weekend. Um, so folks might still see smoke up there. And I know the Coalition for the Pooter River Watershed, um, is also facilitating some burning that's been taking place on private land up around Bend del Ator. So a couple of places folks might see smoke, not just the Forest Service, but also some on private land. Um, and that's going to continue through the winter. Uh, I can provide the INSEE webpage where kind of all the locations are. And folks are always welcome to get ahold of me to get added to our email list. I usually send stuff out once a week. I plan to send another one this afternoon. So, um, just kind of letting people know whether or not to expect smoke. Um, the, as for the broadcast burn, we are still looking at Magic Feather. It would kind of be in that Doughty Lake, um, Mount Margaret kind of area. Um, and looking at not the entire, the, the whole prescribed burn is thousands of acres. Um, just looking at a portion of that, um, if conditions allow. Um, so again, have to make sure that, um, you know, staffing, whether all of the stuff is in place before that would happen. And we had, um, promised the community that we would do a public meeting before we burned last year. Um, and then we, we didn't burn at all last year. So, um, we'll do something similar, either Facebook Live or, or something, a Teams, um, meeting to, to present that information to the community before we ignite. That's still our intention. It just won't be in person. Um, so stay tuned. Uh, we will make sure that we reach out to all of our, um, various contacts in the Redfeather, um, community, that whole, uh, extended area to let you know if, if we're going to burn. Um, so that's kind of the prescribed fire piece. Um, when it comes to rec sports shooting, um, so I think people are predominantly familiar with the closure, the, the emergency closure that the county put in place. So in an effort to support that effort, um, an effort to support the effort, in an effort to support that decision, uh, we have, um, put up new signs, uh, where we had the educational signs before. Now they have all been replaced with the closed to shooting signs with a map, so people know where they are. Uh, so I believe that's three signs that were already in existence that we have replaced. We know there's a desire to have two more. We have the same desire on kind of either end of the closure on dead man. With, with the ground frozen, we won't be able to do that till spring, but it's still our intention. Um, and, and, you know, a chunk of dead man is still closed, so for the season. Um, so we anticipate two more signs. We have them printed, so they're, they're ready. Um, we'll just have to install the wooden, um, holders for those. Um, along with that, we've been talking for a while about our law enforcement officer had left. Um, and now we have a new one in place. Um, and she has already been in the Redfeather community. I think like her third day of work, she was, was out there in the field, uh, with Lammert County Sheriff's Department, um, following up on some, some things in the community. So, uh, that we had been reported about some campers that had been there for a very long time and things like that. So she's already, you know, hit the ground running, working with, uh, our cooperators. And, uh, she loves being in the field, um, and so she's very excited to be here. So I think that's, that's a positive, um, that we have this person back, we have that position filled again. Um, and she was here this summer on, when we brought in some extra resources, um, during, you know, with the extensive use of recreation and our fire restrictions. We did bring in more law enforcement officers last summer and she was here. So she had some familiarity before she got here, um, of the district already, which was nice. Um, one of the other things I believe that was in those questions was about the Tiny Bob Road area. And, um, that it's a private road, but there's Forest Service land there. And, um, we are, we have our two new recreation people here now too. So we're just getting more, more and more people, which is great. Uh, and so he has been up to the site for a site visit with, um, some folks from the community. And, uh, I, I, it's not necessarily a camping closure, but he's going to work with the community and get all the agreements in place that have to, to, um, take place for them to use machinery and things like that, um, that will cut off that illegal vehicle use to the area. So it will, some kind of fencing boulders, they'll, they'll work out all the details. Um, but the, that, that plan is moving forward. And as we get through the snow season, uh, we'll continue working with the Crystal Lakes community to get some volunteers doing some work out there, um, with him. So, uh, his name is Jeffrey and our new, um, law enforcement officer is Paige Bledy. Uh, so those are all good, I think, good things moving forward. Um, then the other, uh, I'll just touch briefly on, uh, the suppression repairs. Uh, there have been questions about that and bear, um, post-fire. And, uh, one thing that folks in the community have probably seen are the giant log decks that are out there. Um, one safety message is we really encourage people to stay away from them. Uh, they, if, if they get, um, shifted a little bit, they could definitely do some damage to folks. So we encourage people to be really safe around them and, and just avoid them. We are working with our timber and recreation staff to identify the priority ones to get rid of. Those that are closest to major roads, major recreation areas. Um, there is one off Tiny Bob that, that will probably be prioritized as well as like the Cameron Peak area. Um, again, just because of safety, those will be the ones prioritized to get sold the quickest, but we will continue to sell those, um, as we have interest and package them up for, um, for bid. Um, also with the suppression repair, um, throughout the Redfeather area are a bunch of dozer lines that are still out there on the ground. And we weren't able to address, um, prior to the incident management teams leaving. So those that are close to other roads and connect with other roads, we need to get blocked off before we can get those roads open, so that we don't get a bunch of illegal routes and people driving in places that they shouldn't on the forest. So that's going to be another priority for us, um, for those fire suppression repairs. Um, and then, uh, finally the closure order. We were able to open up some more space and some more places for people to recreate this winter, just on Friday. So if folks didn't see it, the, the map did change, uh, again, for the better. Um, we got one of the trails in the Pooter Canyon that's been closed, opened the Lower Dad Gulch and some other areas around Long Draw, Long Draw is now open for over snow vehicle access. So snowmobilers can use it. Um, there's no overnight use or anything like that, because if you go too far off the road or the trails, um, we, we haven't been able to necessarily mitigate, um, hazards, um, or it might need some more analysis. So, um, but we're, we're slowly starting to open things as we can. Um, we're, we're having, if the process is to have our firefighters go in, do an evaluation, take care of any immediate safety needs. And then having our recreation crew and volunteers, we're getting some volunteers out there from some of our winter recreation volunteers to help us mitigate, uh, some of the safety concerns with hazard trees and other things. And I think that takes care of most of the list.
Reagan, thank you. And I'm looking at a couple of questions that have just come up regarding the, the recreational sports shooting. I'd like to read those to you. And, and the first one is from Brian, Brian Fessler, who's been very, you know, with the Crystal Lakes, um, uh, association, and he's been very helpful in this whole process. But he says, thank you, thank you. Can you update us on the cooperative law agreement between the US Forest Service and the Lammert County Sheriff's Office? Also, can you talk about the district's planning effort for the, uh, potential operational delineations as it relates to dozer lines? And then the question from Susan Ritter, uh, Reagan, please comment on the activities the Forest Service is doing now to support the permanent closure of the areas already identified by the Forest Service is unsuitable for sports shooting.
Yes, um, and I could probably even touch on, uh, Janice's question about Long Draw. Um, so Brian, nice to see your question. Um, I, I do not know that the cooperative agreement has been signed, but I do know that it is moving forward. So I have, I just, I, the last meeting I had, uh, with our district ranger, we just didn't have the update from our patrol captain yet. But with Paige being here, I know that she's going to be working with the county closely. So I don't know that it's in place, but I know it is in progress. Um, as for the pods, um, and for folks, so they understand what a pod is, is we've worked with a lot of partners to identify these places where if a fire were to, to start, where are those boundaries with roads or other things that we have in place that we already know may make a good indirect line or a direct line, depending on where the fire is. So with that, we have a lot of dozer lines out there from this fire. And the idea is that some of them might be beneficial for us to keep in place, to have as future fire lines, if necessary. So, um, what we're going to do is I talked about, we need to gate some of these areas. Um, so we'll, we'll go in and we'll put up a gate, but we won't necessarily immediately, um, you know, rehab all of those lines until we have an opportunity to do a planning effort to decide which ones would be most beneficial for us to keep. There's a lot out there, so we probably don't need all of them, but some of them might be beneficial that are near communities. So, um, that's one of the things that we are looking at as we are with all of the recovery work, um, that, that is on the Forest Service plate right now. So, um, we, at this point, we aren't necessarily going to decommission, um, a bunch of those lines yet. We will block them off though, so, um, so that we have time to do, um, this analysis. So it's a potential, um, but nothing has been decided yet. I'm just trying to give ourselves a little bit of time to do that work. Um, related to the permanent closure, we, um, have secured the funding. Um, related to the permanent closure, we, um, have secured the funding for the, um, Devil's Nose Shooting Range down on, in Clear Creek. And we anticipate that that is going to begin, uh, the construction of that will begin this hopefully summer, um, fall at the latest. So, uh, once that is built and open to the public, that's when the closures will start. Uh, in, in areas that are either immediately adjacent to that or in places that were not contingent on the, um, a shooting range, um, in that vicinity, like northern Lammert County. Um, and then we're going to continue to do that adaptive management, um, and monitoring that, um, information. Um, and I know Katie shared some, our, our ranger has shared some information and, um, I talked about Jeffrey came out to tiny bob road. Um, and one of the things that he's going to put together is kind of a plan moving forward to how we, um, kind of evaluate the, the activity in that Crystal Lakes area. Um, as for avalanche potential, it's a bad year for avalanche folks. Um, if you, if you didn't already know, um, it, it's, we've had a lot of deaths across the country and in Colorado. So I don't know specifically what the danger is in long draw right now. Um, but I would encourage anyone before they head out to any kind of slope at all with snow to check the Colorado Avalanche Information Center. They are, um, the best source for, for everybody. And I know they were saying just last week that people should stay off of slopes over 30%. That was across Colorado, the, the advice that they were given. So I will give that same advice, um, per the experts and encourage you all to, to do that and to make sure you check those avalanche conditions before heading out. I haven't heard any about any in the long draw area, but that's not to say with all of the varying weather we've had, um, that, that there wouldn't be some risk and concern. So I'd, I'd ask folks to be careful. Um, and I'm reading Susan's follow-up question. I, I do not, um, I do not believe there is a project plan in place yet, but that that is what Jeffrey is doing, um, to, to determine what, um, what steps will need to be taken. Um, and like I said, we, you know, we know that that, um, that site down in Clear Creek will begin, uh, construction and, and for sure, when that gets built, um, that, that will be a trigger for us to start doing those widespread closures.
Uh, Reagan, uh, and there may be other questions. I'm just curious. Are there, the, the measures that we've taken already, putting up some of the signage, taking some of the old signage away? Uh, I know there was a good meeting with Brian and Katie, uh, and on February 10th to walk the dead man road. And are we, is shootings illegal or unsafe shooting going on up there? Are there, have we actually made a difference in keeping people away from where they shouldn't be?
The, the signs, we did, we were able to do the signs on dead man, um, about a week ago. The ones on tiny bob just got, the one on tiny bob just got put up this week because there was a snow drift. And so our person who went out to put the, the sign up could only make it to dead man, couldn't get to the tiny bob one until last week went a different way. Um, so I, I'm not sure about that. Actually, the community members would probably know better than me because I haven't been up there. Um, but we sure hope so. Um, and, and as we get closer into that summer timeframe, we'll start doing some social media and education and outreach about it. Um, so that, you know, that'll be another tool in our toolbox to, and, and make sure people know that, that you cannot be shooting there, um, per the county's, um, regulation. And I'm sorry, Susan, I don't have an estimated timeframe. I'm not sure what was discussed with folks. I wasn't on the, the last field trip. Um, but I do know that that is that Jeffrey was tasked with coming up with that, um, that kind of proposal to take to, um, our forest supervisor, because he is ultimately the, the decision maker. And, um, and get his input on that as well. So, um, I, I apologize that I don't know the exact timeframe, but I do know that he was assigned it.
Thanks Reagan. And I just wanted to remind folks that the, um, you know, the emergency closure that the county put in place, that's in, in place till the end of this year. And, and based on conditions on the ground and, you know, where the U.S. Forest Service is in their adaptive management processes. You know, we do have the option of extending that. But hopefully the, the, the different interventions that we've done are, are going to prove to be useful, effective in, in terms of addressing the problem. So I wanted folks to be, you know, to, to remind them of that. But I'm also, I'm looking at the questions. Reagan, I think you pretty much answered all of them, although one of them gets to the, um, the issue of the community folks and what their observations are with any shooting going on. And question number three says, how do residents report shooting? Uh, last summer, the choice was nine, 911 or U.S. Forest Service webpage. The webpage went unused, so residents stopped reporting. And 911 was recommended for immediate threats own, only. Could you speak to that, uh, Reagan?
Uh, yeah, and I'll, I, I think that I'll kind of share what has been communicated from the sheriff's department in that if, if somebody is an immediate danger, 911, of course, is always going to be the best option. Um, if people are shooting illegally in that, um, in the closed area for the county, then the, uh, non-emergency number for the county sheriffs would be, um, the place to, to report that. And then if folks are wanting to make sure that the forest service knows the activity that's going on, um, and, and the concerns, then that, uh, we do have that inbox, um, where we can take information from folks. We don't necessarily respond to everyone and it is definitely not where people should report emergencies. Um, but it's a way for us to collect data from the community about what's happening out there since we, we can't be, um, all places, all times. So, um, we'd still tell people to, to send in, uh, their observations or concerns to that email address so that we have that data as we're moving forward with the, um, adaptive management process. But, um, but otherwise the, the sheriff's office non-emergency number or, or 911 if it is an emergency.
Thank you. I think it was, uh, Don Simpson who offered those questions. I think that person is still on in the meeting. I just want to make sure that, uh, feel like that, that we've answered those questions adequately at this point. Don, did you want to say anything to that?
All right, Don, I've given you permission to talk and it looks like you're ready to go.
All right. No, thanks Reagan. I appreciate the, the input and the help of the forest service. I think answered the questions. Now we're all just kind of looking forward to how we take the temporary closure that the county commissioners were so kind to approve and permanitize that. So we don't have a, you know, a, a new day next year when that thing expires. So thank you so much for the answers. We appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, Don.
Are there, are there other questions that folks might have, uh, for Reagan regarding, uh, recreational sports shooting related issues? Or, um, uh, you know, fire suppression recovery work that's being done? I think you spoke to that as far as some of the, um, you know, where we, the dozer line, you know, the roads that were put in place. But are there other questions that folks have?
I'm not seeing any commissioner, not at this moment.
And I, I will also put out too that, um, besides that, um, you know, emergency repair and trying to get things open, um, within that closure area, there's a lot of other work going on with partners, especially, uh, Lammert County to look at what, what recovery needs are across the entire landscape. So, um, it's, you know, those are the things that are easy to talk about and are happening right now. But there's a lot happening behind the scenes, um, working with, um, watershed groups and the county and, and other impacted organizations to, to really identify, uh, what else needs to take place across the landscape. Um, so keeping that in mind too, that, that there will continue to be other projects and work taking place, um, especially come spring runoff and, and over the summer.
And, uh, this discussion reminds me that I need to, um, follow up with, uh, Daylon Figs, our director of Department of Natural Resources. Because we began the, um, some preliminary discussions with, um, Ranger Dan Reeves, Lieutenant Reeves, about, um, uh, the, the issue of establishing a, a public shooting range in Lammert County, which is, is different, you know, it's, it's, I think it aligns with all of our efforts here, but it is a, a different effort as far as, um, bringing in all the stakeholders and determining if we can find a good piece of land to actually have a public shooting range, which ultimately would do a lot to help relieve the pressure on our public land. So, um, I need to follow up with Daylon to see, you know, what the next steps are there. I know we reached out to folks in Clear Creek County and other places. So we'll, um, we'll continue to pursue that. And in the meantime, I think that Reagan and her team and Katie Donahue, uh, you, you've all been very responsive and I think we're making some progress and hopefully the, the residents up there can, um, see that or, or feel like it's, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can with this issue and we, you know, we want people to be safe.
Commissioner, we do have a question unrelated to, um, sport shooting or, or fire recovery. So I, I'll leave Reagan as a panelist in case other questions from her come up. But, um, we do have a question off topic. Do you want to take that one? Steve asks, um, any update on Al Canyon construction?
Well, yes, um, you know, recently in our, uh, one update is that recently in our, our administrative matters meetings, we've been, um, we've been approving on, on our consent agenda, what are called deeds of dedication for right of way. So there are some property owners that have been allowing us to, um, you know, have access to where the, uh, the realignment of the Al Canyon Road on the west side. Right now we're working on the, uh, the, the west three miles of that Al Canyon Road as it, as it goes into a highway 287. So that's the update. And if you go to, um, Michelle and her, her magical abilities to find website links. But if you go to, uh, I think it's, um, our county engineering and you go under projects, there's, um, there's a listing of all these projects and there's a very, you know, there's a specific one to the, um, the work on, on Al Canyon Road. And, and you can get a lot more details from that. And Michelle, I'm sure will find it. But suffice to say, we are working on the west two to three miles of that, that project as far as realignment, uh, upgrading the road, paving it and making it safe because there's some curves in there that are, you know, we need to address. And, um, and then ultimately the, the third phase of this project is, is the east end of the Al Canyon Road towards, um, towards I-25. Steve, I hope that at least for now, uh, uh, answers your question adequately. Uh, and I knew, I knew Michelle could do it. If you look in the chat, you'll see, um, I mean, it's a, it's a really good, um, link because it lists all of these various, uh, transportation projects, uh, you know, that county engineering team is involved in. And I think that's a good source of information. Thank you, Michelle, very much. Uh, other questions regarding public lands, um, recreational sports shooting? Oh, and, and then of course Reagan has posted a website for the potential, uh, wood pile burning. Uh, thank you for that. And, and you guys all know that she has an email list that, that, and she sends out emails. I get that. And where she gives us an update on, on, on these kinds of issues. So if you're not on that email list, I, I'm sure there's a relatively easy way to get on that email list. Well, how about we shift gears for a moment there? Of course, why don't you just email the person? Uh, I'd like to suggest that if there are other topics or issues, questions that folks have, this is the time that either I can respond to, maybe Reagan can help out Michelle or Jody. But, uh, otherwise we'll, we'll consider, you know, moving towards some closure here. But I'm happy to entertain any other questions on any other topics. My goodness. Well, one thing I'll mention is I, I believe, uh, it was Karen who talked about the stop sign, uh, on 67J, uh, where it meets with seven, you know, the Red Feather Lakes Road, uh, that had apparently had been knocked over by the snowplow plowing this morning. I did text, um, our road bridge director, Todd Juergens, uh, you know, in the beginning of the meeting. I have not heard back, but, um, you know, it's, it's helpful to bring it to their attention and they'll get right on it. Um, and so hopefully we'll, we'll take care of that as soon as possible. Let's see, there's a Q and A. Oh, someone is suggesting that congratulations to, uh, Commissioner Shadak McNally, uh, for her, um, election. And, and I can tell you that it, it, um, you know, working with Jody and Kristen Stevens, District Two. I mean, it's been great and, you know, we, we have a lot to learn together. And, you know, again, we're doing the best we can to be good, you know, good public servants and working with all our partners like, you know, the U.S. Forest Service. They, they do, uh, they do, they're entrusted with a lot of public lands in, 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 in Lammert County. So we want to make sure we're being good stewards of those lands. And, and there's a lot of good work that's, um, proactive work as far as, uh, you know, mitigation adaptation. There's a lot of stuff happening at the state and the federal level. And then the county is looking at developing a, what we're calling a climate smart Lammert County, uh, action plan. And, and one of the areas that we're looking at is emergency management and, uh, public safety. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of opportunities to collaborate with our, the forest service folks and others, uh, to make sure that we can look at, um, you know, how best to, to, you know, to protect the forests, forest health. And then of course to, to protect folks who have property and, and lives. Uh, it's without a doubt that the prescribed burning that was done in the Red Feather Lakes, Crystal Lakes area in the past, uh, did help impact, impact the direction and the intensity of the Cameron Peak Fire. And it, it, it probably was very, um, what's the word? Uh, um, impactful in terms of, you know, making sure that the fire didn't get any closer to Red Feather Lakes area. I don't know Reagan, if, if there's any science or any analysis that has been done, the, how the prescribed burning that took place, it actually impacted the, the, the intensity and the direction of the fire?
You know, there, there hasn't been anything official done yet, but we, we expect that there will be. Um, because we work so closely with the Rocky Mountain Research Station in Colorado State University, um, and their researchers. So, um, so not, nothing scientific, but, uh, you know, our, who was our fire management officer at the time, James White, definitely saw a change in fire behavior where it hit those areas. And, um, exactly what it did, uh, you know, we can't scientifically say, but we do know that it, it impacted it, it dropped it down to the ground and it, it behaved how we expected it to, once it hit an area that had been burned previously. Um, and we were able to utilize some of those lines, those preparation lines that we had in place for, uh, for planned burns that hadn't been implemented yet to be able to do some burnout operations. So, you know, we know that fire can burn through a prescribed fire that, that's already been treated, but it doesn't burn the same. Um, there's, if there's vegetation there, it can burn, but when there's less vegetation, it, it's going to be, um, the behavior is going to be very different. And that's, that's what we saw, um, you know, just anecdotally from our firefighters on the ground.
Thanks Reagan. And actually folks, I'm reminded, and we'll begin to wrap this up. And if Jody wants any closing comments or thoughts, but, um, I'm reminded that this Saturday, um, this Saturday, uh, we have our, our second, uh, what we're calling, I think, a town hall meeting regarding the Cameron Peak Fire Recovery Efforts. And we had one, I believe it was last week, you know, Lori Hodges, of course spearheaded that. But it was, it gets back to what I think Reagan is talking about here. But one of the presenters at the last one was, uh, there were a couple of folks from the National Weather Service. And, and, and a lot of the focus was on, um, uh, you know, what, you know, projections for flooding. And, and, and one thing we learned is that where the fire burned very intensely, the, the soils became what are called hydrophobic soils. And, and therefore they don't, you know, they don't absorb the rain. And one thing I learned from that meeting was that, um, uh, in light of that, you know, anywhere from a third to a half inch of rain in a 30-minute period could be enough rainfall to actually cause some type of, of flooding events. So that, that meeting is on, on Saturday, actually. Um, and I bet Michelle or, or someone can figure out the link. But I, I forget it, what time it is, eight thirty or I just can't remember, 10 o'clock.
I think it's actually at 10, 10:30 commissioner, and I did put the link in the.
Of course. Yeah. So that might be something of interest to folks. And just a quick reminder that I have invited Lori Hodges and perhaps Justin White cell, if he's available, or somebody from his shop for our next one to talk about our recovery work, uh, you know, to build on what Reagan has been telling us. And also to look at what, you know, what we're thinking about regarding the, um, you know, the wildfire, uh, season for 2021. It's interesting. And, and there's, thank you Reagan. Uh, you know, in the, in the old days, which we don't have anymore, we used to talk about a wildfire season. I, I can see Reagan is smiling. Um, but what I'm learning, and, and she can correct me, is that wildfire season is the whole year now, just about. And, and, and you, you folks saw that with the Cameron Peak Fire, almost 209,000 acres. Goodness gracious, you know, that thing went for four months. And, um, August 13th, so I think final closure may be on the December 4th or something like that. Um, and, and that's probably going to be what we're seeing as we go forward into the future. So we have to do a lot of, uh, forest health work and, uh, forest treatments, you know, um, prescribed, you know, uh, prescribed. So we have to do a lot of forest health work and forest treatments, you know, prescribed, you know, prescribed burns. All of that is necessary to ensure that our forests are healthy and that we can, you know, be, be prepared and actually prevent, you know, some of these crazy intense fires. I think I've, I've done enough speechifying here.
Commissioner, we do have a question.
Oh, my goodness.
So Janice asks, and I'm not entirely sure what this is, so I'm hoping you know, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Janice asks, what company is taking care of the TODS signs, so T-O-D-S?
Yeah.
Fox Acres Directional Sign just before the Prairie Divide Road has been broken for two years.
Yes. Thanks, Janice. And we'll, we'll follow up, but I know that the TODS signs that she's referring to, it's been an issue that's been ongoing, and I guess we haven't yet resolved it. It has to do with signs that the, the state has oversight in terms of, the CDOT has oversight, you know, regarding, I think it stands for, Janice, what does it stand for? Tourist, something directional, but there are some regulations that the state oversees, and they're the ones who dictate which private companies actually do these. And they've not been very responsible in terms of making sure that the signs are maintained. So I didn't, I didn't write down the details, but Michelle, if you could forward them to me about the one on, on Fox Acres Road that's been down. And then I know there's some other concerns. Janice, could you help enlighten us, please?
So that's, are you hearing me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes.
Yeah. So the TODS sign are the tourist oriented directional signs. So there's an application process you go through to get the signs authorized so that you can advertise your business on one of the busier roads closer to it. And Laramo County had arranged to work with a company, a small company based out of Denver for this. And they have not been following up there. So the business pays a fee every two years for maintenance of those signs. And that sign along the Red Feather Lakes Road, I've talked to the company, I've talked to the new guy that came in, and that was a year ago, that they're not doing their end of the bargain, and it just seems to keep falling through.
Janice, thank you. And I believe you'll be on the Red Feather Lakes PAC meeting at 1:30. I would really encourage you to bring that up again, please, with Matt LaFerty and our Leslie Ellis and our folks. Because, you know, one of the things we're doing with the Phase Two update of the land use code is we're going to be updating our quote sign code. It doesn't directly relate to this, but I, I did bring it to their attention. So let's bring this up at the PAC meeting, and let's get this thing resolved once and for all.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Janice. And I'll give you an update at that meeting regarding the, your questions on the Red Feather Lakes, you know, road work. I did get some answers to that. Thank you. Well, Jody, did you want to say anything? Unless there's a, are there more questions? Tourist, yes, of course. Jody, did you want to say anything?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Kofalas. This has been really great and informative to get up to the, up to date on the concerns and, and questions for this great area, Red Feather Lakes. I've been up with you a couple of times for community conversations in person and the library there, and I appreciate, you know, being able to attend today to hear about these, and I'll be following them as well. And I wanted to let everybody know Katie Donahue has offered to meet with me, and I'll be doing some touring up around my neck of the woods because I live in unincorporated Laramo County, west of Loveland in the foothills. So I kind of, no, I'm not as remote as, as you all are. I do have been dealing with about 200 to 300 elk running around my house right now, and mountain lions, bald eagles, all those things. But I live near the Big Thompson River and the Big Thompson Canyon, so I'll be kind of doing some touring around of that area. So I'm looking forward to that. And just appreciate the opportunity to listen, learn, and, and know that you can always reach out to me as well. I know you've got, you know, Commissioner Kofalas has been doing such a great, wonderful job answering all your questions and concerns, but we're all here for, working for you. And I look forward to learning more from Reagan and get to know her. And thanks, Michelle, for facilitating, and, and thanks, Commissioner Kofalas, for having these great opportunities for people to ask questions. And great, I'm really glad to be here today. Thanks.
Thanks, Jody. And as we, as we wrap up, close, Reagan, gratitude to you and your willingness to participate. If you could, you know, maybe put on your calendar if you're available, or, you know, I think the next one is March 25th, maybe for an abbreviated time, if you're available to. I think the folks on the, the Crystal Lakes folks want, want this to be a standing agenda item. So within reason, and if you're not able to come, maybe you could provide me or Michelle with, you know, something in writing that I could share with folks. Because I think they want, you know, some kind of regular updates. So with that, I wish everyone well. I'm curious, how much snow did you get up there in the Red Feather Lakes area? We got, we got about three inches here in town in Fort Collins. How much snow did folks get up there? Reagan, you're a mountain woman. You must know you were up there, right?
Right, I'm just in Timnitz, so.
Steve says about five inches.
Okay.
Well, not much more than we got.
Yeah. Well, again, everyone, please take care. We'll see you in a month. We'll see if we can get Lori Hodges and Justin. And I will be participating in the Planning Advisory Committee meeting in about 15 minutes. And I'll provide an update to Janice on the 74E thing, and then we can discuss the TODS sign, the tourist oriented directional signs. Thank you all. Be well and take care.
Bye.
Thanks Reagan.